Lewis.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Presente.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Ung.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Vernikov.
Here.
Williams. Wan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli. Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Derek Chum Johnson, Sr., founder and pastor of the Black Liberation Church, which is located at 91 Claremont Avenue in Morningside Heights. Welcome.
To all dignitaries, elected officials, public servants, staff, and guests, especially the youth assembled, good afternoon. First, giving honor to God, who's the head of my life, I would like to invoke the aid of deity. May the words in my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your presence, O Lord, my strength and my redeemer. We are thankful for all the holy sacred texts that have withstood throughout the ages of time, from ancient Mesopotamia to ancient Egypt, the four major religions of the far east, the three major Abrahamic faiths, and there so much, much more. We thank Almighty God, the Creator, for all of God's worthy servants. May peace rest upon them. Please accept my prayer in the Christian faith. Let us pray. Most holy and most glorious Lord God, we thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your mercy. We thank you for sending your Christ into this world in the person of Yeshua, Jesus the Christ, and we thank you for leaving us with your Holy Spirit to rest, rule, and abide with us henceforth and forevermore. We thank you for waking us up this morning to your marvelous light, and we thank you for the breath of life. We pray that everyone, under the sound of my voice, that you, Almighty God, renew our minds with just a portion of your infinite wisdom. Lord God, we pray that we will not be just hearers of your word, which is the logic and reasoning of you, Almighty God, but that we will be doers of your word. We pray that you forgive us for our sins and that you bless us with your power to discern good from evil and the discipline to be obedient to the will that you have given us and to stand on truth and advocate for good. Many of us are dealing with sickness and distress, bereavement, mental, physical, spiritual issues, and challenges. So we pray that you bless us from the crown of our heads to the soles of our feet. May you bless our families, our communities, our nation, and bless this world and all those who have gone before us. Please bless our ancestors, Lord God. We ask all these things in the name of all your worthy servants, in the name of Yeshua, Jesus the Christ, and in your most holy and glorious name. Amen. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once quoted, "The church is not the master or servant of the state, but rather the conscience of the state. It must be the guide and the critic of the state and never its tool." A wise man in Harlem by the name of C.J. once told me, "There's only two ways to do business: good business and bad business." And it's my prayer today that before Almighty God, that you do good business on behalf of the people. May God bless you and may heaven smile upon you. Peace and blessings.
Thank you. I'll call on Councilmember Shawna Abreu to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to Reverend Johnson of the Black Liberation Church in West Harlem for blessing us with his presence today. Born and raised in Harlem, Reverend Johnson has worked extensively to protect and advance our arts and culture. He is a photographer with a distinguished career in the entertainment industry. He is also a community board member, youth coach, and gun violence survivor. It is an honor to have you here today, Pastor. Through your ministry, civic advocacy, and youth mentorship, you have served the city of New York and the people of Upper Manhattan with the utmost distinction and care. There is no doubt that your love for our community has infused your service with immense beauty. I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. And I'll call on Councilmember Giose for the adoption of the minutes.
I move that the minutes of the stated meeting of June 30th, 2023, be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Well, messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-172, 893 Eagle Avenue rezoning.
We're on land use call-ups.
Coupled on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-up.
Brooks Powers.
President. Yes.
Thank you. Lewis.
Permission to vote on all land use and general calendar, general order calendar items, and I'd also like to disclose for the record that my brother works for the MTA. My sister's a student at CUNY.
You can go ahead.
Thank you.
Salamanca.
I would like to vote aye on all call-ups, and with permission, I would like to vote on all coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I will aye on all.
Menon.
Hi, I want to request permission to vote on all land use call-ups and all other items on today's general orders calendar. I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. Sanchez.
I would like to vote aye on all call-ups, and with the permission, with your permission, I'd like to vote all on, aye on all coupled general orders.
Go ahead.
I vote aye, and I'd like to disclose on the record that my sibling attends or is a employee at CUNY.
Thank you. Moya.
Yes, Mr. Majority Leader, I request permission to vote on all items on today's agenda.
Go ahead.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye on all.
Areola.
Aye on all.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
I vote aye on all land use call-ups, and with permission, I request the opportunity to vote on all items on the general order calendar.
Go ahead.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Barron.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Butcher.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson. Joseph. Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan. Lee. Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Wrestler. Richardson Jordan.
I vote aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velasquez.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams. Wan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Borelli. Powers.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative and zero negative. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to remember the lives of New Yorkers who died while on the job. Sixty-three-year-old Bernardo Gonzalez Perez, who was a supermarket worker in Councilmember Abreu's district, was killed last month while sweeping the sidewalk. Yesterday, 26-year-old police officer Alexis Martinez was taken from us in the Soundview neighborhood of the Bronx. Our hearts are heavy, and the entire city is saddened by their losses. We are also mourning the tragic loss of 28-year-old O'Shea Sibley, who was killed while dancing at a gas station in Brooklyn. O'Shea and his friends were targeted for being gay and for joyfully and openly expressing themselves in a public space. We cannot detach this violence from the climate of discriminatory and hateful rhetoric against our LGBTQIA+ communities that has been permeating throughout the city and this entire nation. This cannot be allowed to continue and escalate to violence that makes all of us less safe. We must work to protect each other and our community so that all of us can be safe in the expression of our full identities without the fear or threat of violence. We lost 44-year-old Ida Sanchez-Tello, a pregnant mother of three children, who was injured in an apartment fire in Councilmember Vernikov's district about a month ago. She was taken to the hospital in critical condition and passed away just days later. We also lost 59-year-old Mildred Montesino to a house fire in Majority Whip Brooks Powers' district. Mildred was a beloved mother and grandmother who worked hard to raise her two children and six grandchildren in Brooklyn. Our hearts, once again, are with their families during this very difficult time. Recently, we learned about the loss of John Castick, a 27-year-old man who was found dead in the Newtown Creek in Councilmember Gutierrez's district. His death comes more than a month after another 27-year-old, Carl Clemente, was found in the same creek after last seen leaving the Brooklyn Mirage. I want to remind all New Yorkers to please stay vigilant and keep each other safe. Now, I want to take a moment to address the ongoing situation outside of the intake-for-emergencies shelter at the Roosevelt Hotel. Over the past several days, dozens of people seeking asylum in our country have been forced to remain on the streets, even overnight, waiting for shelter. We know that there continues to be a dire need for more federal support and will continue to advocate for what our city deserves. Yet, there are actions that we, as a city, must undertake by working together to address the situation and support our communities and those in needs. This is about helping longtime New Yorkers, our communities, and people seeking asylum. Responding to this challenge cannot solely be focused on finding space or requesting more federal funding. It requires an all-of-the-above approach because what we face is not the result of a single issue. These interconnected issues are far more complicated and demand comprehensive solutions that can only be achieved by all of us working together. We must come together around all the necessary solutions for more federal funding, better homelessness and housing solutions, better management of key services, and investing more wisely in evidence-based solutions that work to address homelessness. July 28th was Peru's Independence Day. Last week, the city council hosted the first-ever Peruvian heritage celebration right here at City Hall, and we thank Councilmembers Shaker Krishnan, Jennifer Gutierrez, and Alexis Aviles for co-hosting this event. Throughout the month of August, colleagues, we have so many cultural holidays that are important to recognize. On August 6th, we will, we will celebrate Jamaican Independence, we'll wait. We will celebrate Jamaican Independence Day. Our city is home to a vibrant, flourishing Jamaican community that has contributed so much to the success of New York. August 10th is Ecuadorian Independence Day. Ecuador, in case you didn't know, was the first country to declare independence in Latin America back in 1809. Ecuadorian New Yorkers have contributed to the, of our city. August 14th is Pakistan Independence Day. This year marks the 76th anniversary of. On August 15th, we will observe both Indian Independence Day and Korean Independence Day, also known as Guangbakjul. August 19th is Afghanistan Independence Day, which commemorates the Anglo-Afghan Treaty of 1919 and the end to British influence in the country. August 24th is Ukraine Independence Day, and we are reminded of Russia's ongoing attacks against Ukraine that began last March. As a city, we remain united in supporting the 150,000 Ukrainian New Yorkers who call our city home and stand in solidarity with Ukraine's right to peace and sovereignty. August 31st is not only my wedding anniversary, but it is also, haha, but it is also, shameless plug, but it is also Trinidad and Tobago's Independence Day, and I am so very proud to represent a diverse Trinidadian community in my own district, the Great 28. We recently passed legislation to create Trinidad and Tobago Street, and I look forward to celebrating that with our community. Additionally, I also want to recognize August 21st. It is National Senior Citizens Day. I call, and you should call also, our seniors, the jewels of our communities, and we wouldn't be here today without their sacrifice. Seniors, we appreciate you and everything you have done for all of us. Women of the council, August 26th is not just my husband's birthday, but it is also Women's Equality Day. Yeah. Which was created thanks to the advocacy of New York Congresswoman Bella Abzug. As the first Women Majority Council, we are proud of the progress we have achieved together and remain committed to advancing women's equality right here and around the world. August is also National Breastfeeding Month, and since we just gave birth to baby number six, right here in the council. This week is also World Breastfeeding Week. Accessibility includes having lactation rooms available and better workplace support for new mothers and parents. As the first Women Majority Council, we are so proud to have made progress towards equitable maternal health care, and will continue to work to secure even more support for birthing people everywhere. And on August 11th, we'll be celebrating the official 50th anniversary of hip-hop. Hip-hop was born in the Boogie Down Bronx. Put those X's down. Oh, debatable? Okay. But it was also shaped and molded by all five boroughs of New York City. Those of us who were actually raised in hip-hop culture understand how it's become a defining soundtrack in our lives. We are so fortunate that so many of the giants and pioneers of this global phenomenon are still here today. I am going to shout out my homeboy LL Cool J of Hollis, Queens, who will be rocking the bells at Forest Hill Stadium on Saturday. Get your tickets, shameless plug, just saying. So please join us in recognizing and celebrating hip-hop's 50th anniversary in your own way. Around the Way Girl, that's right. Don't tell people my, tell people my story, Giose. On August 8th, my office will be hosting the Melanin Summit, changing the color of capital alongside the Black Institute and Department of Small Business Services. The goal of this summit is to connect MWBEs with CDFIs so that we can advance equitable lending and facilitate new business partnerships. August, in case you didn't know, is Black Business Month, so I invite everyone to join us for this historic summit next Tuesday. Now is the moment we've all been waiting for. It's time to celebrate August birthdays, right here in the council. In the month of August, we are celebrating the birthdays of Councilmembers Marjorie Velasquez on August 11th. Councilmember David Carr on August 28th. Councilmember Ina Vernikov on August 30th. And Councilmember Darlene Mealy on my anniversary, August 31st. Today is also the birthday of our amazing Deputy Chief of Staff for Comms, Mandela Jones. I hope all of you August babies have a great birthday with your families and loved ones. Before we continue, I want to give a special welcome to interns who are observing our stated meeting today, from Senator Chuck Schumer's office, from Councilmember Dinowitz's office, and the best interns in the world stand-up, mine, of course, representing the Great 28 in Queens. You see where they're sitting, right? Thank you to all of our, our interns. We welcome you to city council chambers. Welcome, interns. You are wonderful. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. Ocean Crest rezoning. We'll rezone a site in Majority Whip Brooks Powers' district from an existing R41 to R6A. This approval will facilitate a 100% affordable homeownership project with up to 89 units. I want to thank Majority Whip Brooks Powers, the Community Builders, Governor Hochul, Mayor Adams, Congressman Gregory Meeks, Senator James Sanders, Assemblymember Khalil Anderson, Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer, and HPD for their partnership and collaboration to get this project across the finish line. 7120 New Utrecht rezoning will facilitate a new mixed-use eight-story building with approximately 88 housing units, including 26 affordable units under MIH in Councilmember Brennan's district. 56 William Avenue will facilitate one new two-family home in Minority Leader Borelli's district. A new 696-seat primary school in Councilmember Lynn Schulman's district. 1160 Flushing Avenue will facilitate a new mixed-use industrial and commercial development in Bushwick. The council is modifying the rezoning area to remove additional properties along Wyckoff Avenue, where there is no agreement or commitment in place to provide industrial space, in line with recommendations from Brooklyn Community Board Four and the Brooklyn Borough President and Councilmember Gutierrez's district. We're also voting on two landmark designations. Linden Street Historic District, a cohesive and distinctive block of 32 row houses in the Bushwick neighborhood in Brooklyn in Councilmember Gutierrez's district. And former colored school number four, a three-story mid-block building in the Chelsea neighborhood of Manhattan, built by the city's Public School Society in the late 1840s. The public school house served black children exclusively until the public school system closed the segregated school in 1869 in Councilmember Butcher's district. We will vote on the following resolutions. First, we'll vote on Resolution 237A, sponsored by Higher Education Committee Chair, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, which calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Fair College Admissions Act. This state bill would prohibit legacy admissions preferences at undergraduate colleges in New York State, declaring such policies as inequitable and discriminatory. Thank you to our staff members, Chloe Rivera and Regina Paul. We will also vote on a pair of resolutions. Resolution 694A, sponsored by Civil Service and Labor Committee Chair, Carmen De La Rosa, and Resolution 729A, sponsored by Chair De La Rosa and Councilmember Amanda Farias, to express the council's support for the Writers Guild of America and the Street Actors Guild Unions, respectively, in their fights for fair contracts. Thank you to our staff members, Elizabeth Arts and Riya Ogusawa, Ogusawara. There will be several pieces of legislation on today's agenda. Introduction 289A, sponsored by Councilmember Carolina Rivera, will require the Department of Transportation to create and regularly update a searchable bicycle infrastructure map with all bike lanes in New York City. The map must contain information about current or planned obstructions on bike routes and feature the location of open streets, bike parking infrastructure, and micro-mobility stations, and information on how to report bike lane issues. Thank you to our staffers, Mark Chen, Samuel Bridbart, Kevin Kautowski, and John Basile. Introduction 689A, sponsored by public advocate Jumani Williams, would eliminate the Department of Building Permanent Filing Fees related to certain green building projects for one to three family homes. Green building projects would include projects or renovations that will produce, from utilization of renewable resources, a decrease in carbon emissions in at least half of the building's prior admissions. Thank you to our staffer, Taylor Zalone. Introduction 384A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would create an Office of the Homeowner Advocate within the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to provide information, resources, and assistance to homeowners. The Office of the Homeowner Advocate would also be required to report annually on homeowner inquiries received, actions taken to address these inquiries, and make recommendations for services for homeowners that are not currently available. Thank you once again to staff member Taylor Zalone. In continuation of the council's efforts to legislate against the harms of lead-based paint, we will vote on several bills, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, to increase inspection, remediation, and enforcement against these hazards. Introduction 5A would require building owners to produce records of lead-based hazard inspections, investigations, and remediation work, including x-ray fluorescence testing after August 2025. Introduction 6A would expand the remediation requirement for lead-based hazards for turned-over units to include remediation prior to turnover where a child under six years old resides. And introduction 758 would shift the city's inspection process to be more proactive by requiring HPD and DOHMH to annually identify and inspect buildings where children live and where there might be a risk of exposure to lead-based hazards, given a building's violation history. Thank you again, Taylor Zalone. Finally, the council will vote. Finally, the council will vote on Introduction 31C, sponsored by Consumer and Worker Protection Committee Chair, Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez, which will establish a permanent outdoor dining program. After an extensive progress of engagement with many thoughtful conversations with the various stakeholders, we are voting to create a newly revised permanent outdoor dining program that will continue to serve our restaurants, residents, and visitors. During the COVID-19 pandemic, outdoor dining became a lifeline for small businesses and New Yorkers seeking socialization and normalcy through a temporary program that expanded the opportunity beyond limited capacity primarily in Manhattan. This legislation incorporates lessons learned from this temporary program by making increased accessibility and inclusivity to outdoor dining permanent, while addressing concerns to strike the right balance for restaurants, neighborhoods, and all New Yorkers. Excuse me. This legislation makes it possible for many restaurants to participate, eases the bureaucratic barriers, and makes the cost of participation affordable, while focusing on regulations to enhance orderliness and uniformity missing from the temporary program. This permanent program under local law will serve and support our neighborhoods, restaurants, residents, and city for years to come. Introduction 31C will allow sidewalk cafes to operate year-round and, for the first time, permanently allow roadway cafes to operate most of the year, specifically the warmer eight months of April through November. Excuse me. Makes the costs for restaurants to participate in the outdoor dining program more affordable and lower compared to the pre-pandemic outdoor dining licensing and revocable consent process. Reduce the required processes and timeliness for restaurants to receive approval from the city agencies and entities. In conjunction with zoning changes approved by the council in 2022, permit more neighborhoods and restaurants within them to be eligible for participation in outdoor dining than the previous pre-pandemic sidewalk cafe program. And provide time for restaurants to transition, allowing them to continue their outdoor dining operations even after this local law takes effect, as long as they apply for a license and submit a petition for revocable consent on or before the date set forth by the Department of Transportation, which cannot be less than three months after the rules go into effect. We thank our staff members, particularly Rachel Cordero, David Seitzer, Sarah Swain, and Natalie Meltzer. Thank you very much for your attention. Now I turn it back into the hands of our majority leader.
Thank you. Speaker Adams, we'll now move into discussion of general orders. We'll first hear from Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. I am so excited today that we will pass a bill of crucial importance semi-community and to communities all across the city. Introduction 384, which would create an Office of the Homeowner Advocate. We need to invest in homeownership, such that when New Yorkers in low-income neighborhoods and communities of color buy a home, they know the city has their back. That's why I'm proud to co-sponsor this legislation, which would create the Office of Homeowner Advocate within HPD to provide support to homeowners alongside nonprofits that are currently providing services to homeowners. It would also help connect homeowners to access resources and create public awareness campaigns about the rights and responsibilities of homeowners. Special shout-out to the original prime sponsor, former council member Idanique Miller. We will also vote through a land use item in my district, the Ocean Crest rezoning, which will result in a 100% affordable homeownership project in my district. I want to express my appreciation to Jesse Battis of the Community Builders and the team at Nehemiah for their partnership and for rising to the call for affordable homeownership. Together, we have made a number of commitments on this historic project that will benefit the community, including 50% hiring from Community Board 14, 35% MWBE utilization, a mutually agreed-upon labor monitor, targeted outreach to NYCHA residents to provide them with homeownership opportunities, infrastructure investments, and a commitment to engage with the labor, to explore workforce opportunities. I thank Speaker Adrienne Adams and her chief of staff Jeremy John for their leadership and guidance throughout this process. I also thank the land use staff and everyone at Central Staff who worked on this. As I am ever grateful to my local elected partners, including Congressman Gregory Meeks, Senator James Sanders, Assembly Member Khalil Anderson, Borough President Donovan Richards. I thank the administration, including Deputy Mayor Torres Springer, Chief Advisor Ingrid Lewis Martin, Chief of Staff Camille Varlack, and their staff at HPD. Thank you as well to our state partners, the governor's staff, including Stacy Lynch, Karen Keog, and the staff at HCR, and especially Speaker Carl Heese for his commitment to homeownership and recognizing the need. I am always thankful for my community and its members, from the community board to local civic organizations to everyday residents. That is who sent me to City Hall, and that is who I fight for when I walk through these doors of City Hall each day. I want to close by recognizing the city's black population has declined by nearly 200,000 people in the past two decades. So many of these New Yorkers, low-income New Yorkers and New Yorkers of color are being priced out of the city. Legislation like this and projects like Ocean Crest will help ensure more of these New Yorkers have the ability to stay and the stability, most of all, to stay. I look forward to working with the administration to expand resources for homeowners in communities like mine and making the American dream more accessible here in New York City. Thank you. And I'd like to disclose, I'm a member of Queens' Land Use Chapter, Delta Symbiote and Incorporated. And congratulations to all of my colleagues passing the bill today. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Rivera, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we will vote on a piece of legislation that I am glad to have sponsored. Intro 289 will require DOT to create a searchable map of every bicycle lane in New York City with information about bike network disruptions and the location of temporary bicycle lanes. The map will also have information about the location of open streets, bicycle parking infrastructure, micro-mobility share programs and stations, and information on how to report bicycle lane issues. New York has expanded its bike network to over 1,500 miles of bike lanes, including hundreds of miles of protected lanes. Effective operation, including predictable routes and trips, detours, and other provisions during disruption, has to be part of the city's infrastructure strategy to really create this network to be more safer and more accessible and a means of getting around town. Eighteen bike riders were killed in the first six months of 2023, putting New York on track to have the second deadliest year to date for cyclists on record. Additionally, on June 7th, the 100th New Yorker fell victim to traffic violence, marking the earliest occurrence of such a tragic event since 2014. Thousands of New Yorkers commute, do business, shop, and visit this city throughout the five boroughs by bicycle each day, and that is deserving of the same information and alerts alerted to motorists and transit riders. We must dramatically speed up street redesigns and use all of the tools at our disposal to continue to bring safer streets to New York City. That includes piloting and implementing new technology in shared street designs, pedestrianizing open spaces, and increasing bus and bike lane networks. Our city's bike lane network is a transportation system like any other, and cyclists really do deserve real-time data. It can prevent a morning commute from becoming a treacherous journey. So I want to thank all my colleagues and advocates, of course, my crew, the legislative team, and I really do urge all of my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you. I'm excited to have two land use items this month. Land use item number 247, which establishes Linden Street as a historic district, and land use item 243, a mixed-use rezoning at 1160 Flushing Avenue in Bushwick. Linden Street, which is a variety of architectural styles from the late 19th century, is a rare, well-preserved reminder of South Bushwick's past. In a neighborhood in which so many landmarks have been lost to fires and gentrification, this designation is cause for celebration. I want to thank Landmarks Chair Lewis and my partner in Bushwick, Councilmember Nurse, for their support in pushing this through to a vote. We are also voting on 1160 Flushing, where the applicant has contractually committed to mixed commercial-industrial development in collaboration with our CBO partner, Evergreen Exchange. This commitment aligns with the goals of Evergreen's North Brooklyn Boa Planning Study, District 34 Land Use Policy, and priorities established through extensive community engagement and multiple studies within the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone. This area is a vital industrial hub, and the neighborhood must retain its manufacturing uses. Today, I also want to acknowledge our summer interns, Olivia, Kelly, Jay, and Chris, who are also upstairs, who are helping us to run this office in the summer smoother. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Barron.
Thank you very much, my colleagues. I know you all miss me, and probably some of you are suffering from deep depression, but it'll be all right. I just wanted to speak on Intro 31C. Very, very challenging choice for me to vote no, but the reason being is the sidewalk cafes work, but the roadway cafes in many of our communities and many of our constituents said that they really didn't want it. It's causing chaos, not only parking, but some health issues, and in many instances, they're even underutilized, but just taking up a whole lot of space. So it's the roadway cafes that I'm going to have big, big problems with, so that's the reason why I'll be voting no on Intro 31C.
Please hold your applause. Do we have anyone else signed up at this moment for general orders? Okay, we'll now move into today's agenda. We will move into the report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 31C, sidewalk cafes.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered Reso 726 Transparency Resolution.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intros 5A and 6A, lead-based paint remediation.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 384A, Office of the Homeowner Advocate.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 689A, filing fees for green building projects.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 750A, proactive inspection requirements.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 239 and Reso 733 through LU 242 and Reso 738, 736, various rezonings.
coupled on general orders.
LU 243, 1160 Flushing Avenue.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197-D of the New York City Charter.
Excuse me. LU 244 and Reso 737, 56 William Avenue.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 247 and Reso 738 and pre-considered LU 248 and Reso 739, landmark designations.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 249 and Reso 740, primary school.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 289A, bicycle infrastructure map.
amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 243 and Reso 741, 1160 Flushing Avenue.
coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intros 5A and 6A.
Aye, thank you.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
I vote no on LU 241 and 242, 721 New York Avenue rezoning. It's only 25% affordability and 75% market, and I vote no on Intro 31C, as previously stated. Aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Botcher.
No on 31C and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
I'm voting aye on all, but I just want to talk about 31C for a minute. I feel that it has a compromise in its execution, and I do want to thank the staff. I do hope that the rulemaking does take into effect many of the concerns. Obviously, people are concerned about noise, they're concerned about the hours that the roadside will end, they're concerned, I think, also about the issue of how commercial and residential have different needs. Obviously, residential is more dense often in terms of people living there and experiencing the outdoor cafes. I'm also concerned because of the storage for the restaurants, what happens in the time between November and April when they're not outdoors? How will they be storing their tables, chairs? I'm concerned about something that is maybe not concerned anybody else, but when we do take down the current, very large in some cases, outdoor cafes, what's going to happen to the planters, the wood, and the things that have been in construction for these many months? Can it please go not to the landfill, but to something perhaps with schools or places where they are in need of such materials? I'm also concerned because Manhattan has the commercial rent tax all the way from Murray to 96th Street, so the small businesses already pay a tax, and I want to make sure that those that are paying for their outdoor cafes have a reasonable opportunity that it's not too high. Some people would like it higher. I do not. So Department of Transportation, okay, fine, that you're going to be doing this outdoor inspections. Make sure you have enough inspectors. This is all based on having good oversight. I have to say right now, when I have some outdoor cafes that are not operating, I can't get rid of them. So I'm a yes, but I am a yes with please, rulemaking, oversight, and pay attention to some of the issues that have been brought to the agency's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to also add to my thank yous. I would like to thank council members Salamanca and Riley for their partnership, guidance, and most of all, friendship in this U-Look process. And I also like to thank all of my colleagues for their continued support, calls, and texts during the process as well. With that, I vote aye on all.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Just like to confine my remarks to Introduction 31C. I think the portions of this bill, as they pertain to the sidewalk cafes, are truly excellent. It took a moribund, onerous, expensive process and really made it much better while retaining community and council member input, and it's to the credit of the chair, who's the prime sponsor of the bill, that it turned out that way alongside all the staff on both sides of City Hall that have worked on this. And I'm such an admirer of it that it would make a roadway skeptic, dining skeptic like myself, support this bill if it were identical in terms of the procedures, but they're not. And it misses a crucial component for the roadway dining portion, which is the call-up option that we have under the sidewalk cafe rules. And I think that is something that we needed to have. I know there's reticence about doing it because it would require a referendum to amend the charter in that way, but I think when we're considering converting, you know, lane miles of public space to the benefit of a particular commercial entity, a restaurant, that it's not a bad thing to ask the public their opinion on such a grant of an ability. But also, in addition to that, it requires us, as we give this authority to DOT as a legislative entity, basically, we're giving them a blank check. And I don't want to judge the situation based on my relationship with this mayor and this DOT, which is very good. It's about what's the worst-case scenario between a relationship between a council member and an executive agency? And we have to make sure that in the future, all the processes are going to allow the community input and the council member input to be heard, and more importantly, to be heeded. And that's one of the reasons why I can't bring myself to support this legislation, because I don't want to trust a hope that the agencies will listen and heed to me or my successors. I want to be able to know that for sure, and a call-up would ensure that. So I'll be a no on Introduction 31C, as well as Intros 5A and 6A, and aye on the rest. And I'm simply going to disclose on the record that in the transparency resolution we're voting on today, CUNY is funded, and my spouse is a student at CUNY. Thank you.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias.
Ever aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intro 5A, Intro 6A, and Intro 31C. I want to be associated with the remarks of Councilmember Carr on 31C. Thank you.
Kagan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
So I would like to talk about Intro 31C. Already, some of the concerns were mentioned about minuses of this legislation in terms of taking parking spots, too much power to DOT, and data of replacing DOT, and date of replacing all of these wooden sheds is now November 1st, 2024. I would prefer it to be happening this year, but I believe that pluses outweigh the minuses in this legislation, because finally, we are doing away with these wooden sheds. They will be replaced with removable chairs and umbrellas. So I also like these simplifying changes for sidewalk cafes. By the end of the day, I decided to vote yes on Intro 31C and yes on all, with the exception of Intro 5A and Intro 6A. Also, my daughter is a student at CUNY, and this transparency resolution funding CUNY, so I'm declaring that my daughter is a student at CUNY. Thank you.
Thank you. Marte.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
My district has the second highest density of outdoor dining sheds in New York. My constituents know what works and what doesn't. We just don't have one bad actor. We have hundreds. We just don't have one example of a good outdoor dining program and what it might look like. We have dozen. We have met with city agencies, industry stakeholders about this issue for over a year. We've gone on walkthroughs, we've developed alternatives, and I'm deeply disappointed that the recommendation from the people with the most experience of living next to and on top of an outdoor dining sheds were ignored. We even asked for a compromise and were rejected. Midnight closing for outdoor dinings aren't for dinings. They're for drinking and partying. This keeps up the working-class people of my district while gentrifiers outside party outside their windows. The four-year window for review is undemocratic and allows chronic bad actors to get away with it for years without repercussion, especially as we see cities struggle to enforce even existing regulation. To the thousands of lower Manhattan residents that oppose this legislation, I'm sorry that we have failed you today. I'm still grateful for your advocacy, and will continue to fight to make sure your voices are heard. For these reasons, I vote no on Intro 31C and aye on the rest.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Thank you. You can use your hands or something else. Thank you. Mealy.
I vote aye on all, and I would like to vote no on 31C and be associated with the marks of my colleague, Mr. Carr. Thank you.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
While I'm thinking deeply about 31C, we came to a point where we are divided, but maybe sitting here, even the decision is tough. We have to understand our, I mean, why we're making decisions even when it's tough. What so many talk about the shed, what they've been going through, but I do believe in the process in our city and the agency responsible, and not only our time, but for those that come after us to be responsible and hold people accountable. And one of the reasons that I feel at ease to say yes to 31C is because that we have a chance in our community board, where each community board will have the opportunity to review what, how the businesses are doing in our community. It's a challenging time for small businesses, and while we all say the rhetoric, the small business is a backbone of a community, so we have to stand by what we're saying. So we need business in our community, and that understanding led me to say yes and aye to all. Thank you.
Nurse.
Aye on all.
Ose.
Permission to explain my vote? Just kidding. Aye. Aye on all.
Thank you, Council. I was going to decline it anyway, so. Palladino.
Aye on all except for Intro 5A, 6A. I vote no on Intro 31C, and I vote no on Reso 237.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all. Excuse me. Aye on all with the exception of 31C, which I'm a no.
Thank you. Richardson Jordan.
Aye on all.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye on all except Intro 31C.
Thank you. Ong.
Aye on all.
Velasquez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. There are many people who deserve credit for getting this bill up for a vote, but for the sake of time, I want to thank Speaker Adams, Mayor Adams, and all the New Yorkers who have shared their voices on this important issue. This was truly a collaborative effort. This is a great way to celebrate Restaurant Week by passing legislation creating a permanent outdoor dining program. During the pandemic, outdoor dining was a lifeline for our city, having helped keep businesses open when the city was shut down. The program kept people employed and gave our local communities an opportunity to connect with one another and be outside of our homes safely. What the Open Restaurant Executive Order proved that not only were there potential benefits for consumers, but also an opportunity for the food service and restaurant industry to benefit. This bill is a combination of bringing everyone to the table and creating a uniform program that considers the unique circumstances in each borough and neighborhood. Intro 31C provides the peace of mind for our businesses to have a permanent program and the space for our city to move forward and continue to evolve this program and how we utilize our spaces. We heard your concerns from restaurant owners, workers in the food industry, constituents, local businesses outside the industry that would be impacted by this legislation. Having spent the past year negotiating and modifying the bill to be as inclusive and equitable as possible, meeting the needs of the different types of restaurants and eateries across our cities. The pandemic changed our lives, changed the way we live, the way we do business, for better or for worse. But as New Yorkers, we continue to fight and we evolve during these dark times. We now have an opportunity to build a stronger New York, not only an opportunity to revitalize our barren streetscape, but also giving our food and restaurant industry, particularly small business owners, mom-and-pop stores around the five boroughs, the tools not only to bounce back from the hardships created by COVID, but also to help propel our local and state economy into a brighter future. So with that, I vote aye on all, and also want to disclose on the record, husband works at DUP, and my brother is a board member at Americans of New York.
Thank you. Vernikov.
Aye on all except no on Intros 5A, 6A, and Intro 31C. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. A lot of the concerns that colleagues have about this bill, including members who voted for it, is with respect to how this will play out. The wise council member from Manhattan spoke earlier, brought up a number of very important issues. I agree with every single one of them, although we're coming to a different conclusion. I do very much want to associate myself with Councilmember Brewer's remarks and Councilmember Carr's remarks. At the end of the day, we are the policymakers. We make the policy. And when we do a bill and we give it over to an agency and say, "You make the policy," what they're supposed to be doing is executing the policy that we've devised here. We haven't done that. We've left open hours of operation issues, we've left open issues with congested streets, we've left open issues, as Councilmember Marte brought out, with respect to the particularities of neighborhoods that are 500 years old versus neighborhoods that are 50 years old. This is a big difference. I talk about this all the time. One-size-fits-all rule doesn't work in New York City. Just doesn't. We're too big and too complicated of a city. When we do one bill and says that this is going to be the policy from the tip of Staten Island all the way up to the Bronx and all the other boroughs in between, it just doesn't work. Not on this kind of bill. So I will respectfully, with great admiration for those who have worked hard on this issue, but I do believe that the wrong conclusion has come out of it. I vote aye on all with the exception of Introduction 31 and Introductions 5 and 6. Thank you very much.
Powers. I vote aye. Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
All items on today's General Order calendar adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Intro 5A and 6A, adopted by a vote of 35 in the affirmative, seven negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 31C, adopted by a vote of 34 in the affirmative, 11 negative, zero abstentions, and land use items 241, 242, and accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, one negative, zero abstentions. We'll now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees.
Hold on. Sorry. Hold on. One's correct. Take a moment to our recess. Okay. Okay. I have to read a revised vote. The vote on Intro 5A and 6A was adopted by a vote of 38 in the affirmative, seven negative, and zero abstentions. Apologies for that, and that was now corrected. We'll now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of resolutions. I'll first call on Councilmember Dinowitz, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you. Today, I encourage my colleagues to pass Resolution Number 37A, calling on New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign the Fair College Admissions Act, which would prohibit legacy admissions preferences at undergraduate institutions in New York State. According to Princeton University researchers, a legacy preference is worth an estimated 160-point boost on the SAT. College Board staff reports it increases admission odds by 45%. Through legacy preference, universities perpetuate a societal status quo. It gatekeeps exactly who is allowed into college classrooms, and from there, of course, who is allowed into future boardrooms, lucrative workplaces, and positions of decision-making, all spaces traditionally lacking representation from marginalized communities. But today, we have an opportunity to create a more equitable future, to dismantle barriers, and to uplift first-generation college students, lower-income students, students of color, undocumented students, and students from immigrant families. By passing the resolution, we are sending a powerful message to the young people of our city and state that their highest ambitions are indeed possible. And I just want to say a quick thank you to Jenna Klaus, Adam Starpoli, Regina Paul, Christina Yamaati, and Chloe Rivera for their work on this resolution.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Farias, followed by Councilwoman De La Rosa.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we're voting on Resolution 729, a resolution myself and Councilmember De La Rosa, along with additional support from colleagues, which expresses this council's unwavering support of striking SAG-AFTRA members in their pursuit of a fair and just contract. Earlier this week, we rallied in City Hall Park to showcase to the motion picture and television producers that New York City is and always has been a union town, and that they must come back to the table and engage in good-faith negotiations. When they come to us and ask for tax breaks, they always say it's to protect workers, and they have shown us time and time again it's about their bottom line. As a former Teamster and Local 210 member, the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, and someone who represents a large studio in my district, I look forward to voting on this resolution today for workers. A final huge thank you to all of those who are bravely on strike and to everyone who testified at this week's hearing. I encourage all of my colleagues here to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we hear from Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the colleagues who have expressed support for the striking WGA and SAG-AFTRA members who are on the picket lines and have been for the past 14 weeks. As today stated, we're proud to move forward with Resolutions 694 and Resolution 729 in support of WGA and SAG-AFTRA contract negotiations. Maybe we will finally get a new season of Abbott Elementary or Stranger Things if this works out. This is the first time in 63 years that the sister unions have gone on strike together, and it is indicative of the massive movement in labor that we have witnessed in recent months. It is a hot labor summer, as we know, where we reverted a UPS Teamster strike, the NICENA, private sector nurses just secured a historic contract that they have fought for for far too long, and more movements continue to grow across our city. New York City is home to a large media and entertainment industry with over 185,000 New Yorkers employed in the industry. Corporate greed has no place here, and we're proud to stand with 170,000 creatives who walked off the job and are pushing for better wages. We are asking for the AMPTP to come to the table in good faith and negotiate for our workers, and we have the opportunity to support these workers right now. We have a message to those who seek to do business in our city. We are a city who puts workers first. Bob better sell that yacht quickly and make sure that our workers are taken care of. I ask my colleagues to vote aye for these resolutions.
Thank you. We'll now call on Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm excited to introduce Introduction 1157.
Councilwoman Riley, we're going to save that for a general discussion. This is on resolutions right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Yeah, it's okay. We got you on the list. Anyone else on today's resolutions? Okay, we'll now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 237A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign the Fair College Admissions Act, Assembly Bill 1423A, and Senate Bill 1470A, which would prohibit legacy admissions preferences at undergraduate institutions in New York State. Will all those in favor please say aye? Will all oppose say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution... Pre-considered resolution, the next resolution, pre-considered resolution. Pre-considered resolution, the next resolution, Pre-Considered Resolution 729A expresses unwavering support of striking SAG-AFTRA members in the pursuit of a fair and just contract. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into today's general discussion. I want to first call on Councilmember Ariola.
Today, I'm welcoming some very special guests into City Hall. Jason Youngberg and his uncle, Michael Coughlin. Jason, who's entering... (applause). Jason is our council member for the day. He's entering the seventh grade this fall at the St. Francis de Sales Academy in Bell Harbor, and he is the winner of our Veterans Appreciation.
Councilmember Ariola, just hold on one second. We have one more resolution we have to vote on. You can, I'll let you finish, and then we're going to, just please stay put, we need to take one more vote, but you can finish. Go ahead.
Jason wrote an essay about his uncle Mike, a nine-year veteran of the U.S. Army who served in Operation Iraqi Freedom before becoming a member of New York's Finest, protecting Americans at home and abroad while in uniform. However, that was not enough. Just recently, Mr. Coughlin donated his kidney to his local parish priest, Father Jim Cunningham, and after years of battling a deadly illness, Father Cunningham is on the road to recovery. As Jason, yes.[691.32][691.32](applause) And Mr. Coughlin is here with us today as well. Jason said in his essay, "My uncle, Mike Coughlin, is the definition of a hero, and it is my great honor to recognize that hero today in City Hall and to also recognize Jason Youngberg, who is able to encapsulate that story of heroism so perfectly." Congratulations to both of you, and thank you for the time.[716.23][716.23](applause)
I think he's going to be your successor one day, Councilmember Ariola. We're going to now just move to a vote on Resolution 694A. I'll read it. Calls on the Alliance of Motion Pictures and Television Producers to engage in a good-faith negotiation that will result in a fair contract for all Writers Guild of America members. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll go back to general discussion now. We're going to now call on Councilmember Gennaro.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll move to Councilwoman Nurse, followed by Councilwoman Riley.
Sorry, I wasn't organized. Okay. Today, I'm introducing three bills I'm seeking your support on. The first is Intro 1153 with Councilmember Hanif. It is a reporting bill to provide more transparency around the practices and costs involved with homeless sweeps and other removals. Not only are homeless sweeps deeply counterproductive and ineffective, they are expensive, dangerous, and most importantly, they often result in civil and human rights violations. Secondly, Intro 1154, a bathroom bill that complements the work of Councilmember Rita Joseph's bill and mandates the city to, among other things, set a goal of creating one toilet per every 2,000 people by 2035, identify public and private sites that can be utilized for public toilets, and create a public map of existing and planned toilets with their design features. And lastly, with Councilmember Caban, Intro 1152 would require the city to support access to our underutilized industrial areas for food production and distribution hubs and related industrial food activities in order to increase the resiliency of our localized food system. As the pandemic and other natural disasters have made clear, we must make concrete steps towards increasing food security and resiliency in New York City. I hope to have your support on all three bills and look forward to discussing them with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now call on Councilwoman Riley, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am calling on my colleagues on support for two bills I'm introducing today. Intro 1157, which will rename Williams Bridge Square in my district to Marcus Garvey Park. Marcus Garvey was a Jamaican board visionary, publisher, journalist, and political advocate who united continents in his lifetime. I would like to celebrate this piece of legislation with a group in my district called the Jamaican Progressive League in my district for not only their partnership and advocating for this piece of legislation, but also for its deeply committed work to empower our community with health, education, and resources. I urge my colleagues to sign on to Intro 1157 and join in this rich history. The last bill I'm asking my colleagues to sign on is Intro 1158, which is an introduction which will require reporting on the accessibility for the deaf, hard-of-hearing, and deaf-blind community in the implementation of text to 911. Expanding equity and access to culturally competent systems for people with disabilities is crucial for fostering inclusivity and equal opportunities. In addition, excuse me, this bill requires annual reports to now include information on the outreach efforts for hiring and retaining deaf, hard-of-hearing, and deaf-blind accessibility experts. In addition, by expanding the reporting requirements for the implementation of next-generation 911, we will be able to access the techn, excuse me, the technology we are using to better understand the interconnected needs of our diverse community. Intro 1158 requires a description of the public education plans for informing people who are deaf, hard-of-hearing, and deaf-blind of the availability of the next-generation 911. I encourage my colleagues to support these two pieces of legislation today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Councilwoman Caban.
Thank you. This week, the Bushwick, Williamsburg, and larger community of District 34 were shocked by the tragic events that resulted in the loss of two lives in East Williamsburg. I am heartbroken by these deaths, and our hearts are with the families and loved ones of Carl Clemente and John Kastig, and I just want to thank Speaker Adams for acknowledging them in her remarks. These tragedies highlight the critical need for safety measures in our industrial areas. The industrial business zone has seen a significant expansion of nightlife in recent years but lacks the infrastructure investments necessary for safe growth, such as lighting, signage, connectivity, and public transportation. Without these measures, the expansion of nightlife creates additional pressures on and challenges in industrial areas. We must strike a balance of managed growth and public use to ensure the safety of all New Yorkers. I'm also proud to introduce Intro 1144, Know Your Rep, a bill that was derived from my longtime Bushwick and Ridgewood organizer, Juan Mayen Sala. The bill will require all building owners to provide information to their tenants about their elected representatives, as well as DOB and HPD contacts. This bill will help to create transparency and support tenants in advocating for their rights. And finally, I just want to thank Speaker Adams and her teams, and Councilmembers Aviles, Krishnan Dinowitz, Ariola, and Wrestler for co-sponsoring and attending the council's Colombian Independence Day celebration on July 20th. It was a great event, and as the council's first Colombian, it was a big honor to bring it here to City Hall, and we look forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. If you've been following the news closely, you probably know that in Florida and other places run by right-wing bigots, including some places in New York State, those in power are sending big government censors into schools and libraries to strip people of their freedom to read. That includes not just banning books, but also changing curricula to teach such offensive absurdities as the benefits of chattel slavery for the kidnapped Africans ripped from their homes, families, languages, and cultural traditions, and relegated to the legal status of livestock. Today, along with Councilmember Abreu, I've introduced a resolution that will state clearly and proudly that such racist and other queer-phobic human rights violations have no place in New York City. Our libraries already offer free digital library cards nationwide to help those living under authoritarian oppression circumvent the right-wing book bans being inflicted on them. With this resolution, the world will know that this council will defend the freedom to read, that we will defend inclusive democracy, that we will defend the lives of queer New Yorkers and New Yorkers of color, and that we are putting powerful bigots on notice. So we all deserve the freedom to read, and I'm asking my colleagues to please support Resolution 727. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to share that I'm joined by my summer interns as well. They've been here all day, attending all the rallies. So excited for them to see local government and work. I'm proud to be introducing two bills today. Intro 1145, which I'm introducing alongside Deputy Speaker Ayala, requires the administration of published data required related to the respite centers and the HIRCs, including sites, population, demographics, length of stay, and discharge details. Up to now, the administration has not shared this data with the council or the public, leaving us with an unclear understanding of how these locations are functioning. Given deteriorating conditions, including lack of showers or air conditioning at some sites, this information is critical. Intro 1153, which I'm introducing alongside Councilmember Nurse, requires the administration to publish data on homeless encampment sweeps, including where and how they are conducted, what city resources are used to carry them out, and their long-term impact. Sweeps are a cruel and ineffective tool in the battle to end homelessness in our city. We must understand how this administration is utilizing them. I encourage my colleagues to join these bills as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Ferris.
Thank you. I'm calling about Intro 1135. It's a big idea to establish a Wards Island Affordable Housing Task Force. I want to thank Councilmember Ayala for joining me. So Wards Island is right next to Randall's Island. For those of you who don't know it, it has lots of land on it. It is something that could be like Welfare Island became Roosevelt Island with thanks to Ed Logue, and there's no reason we can't do the same thing. And it would take some years, a city-state task force. The state has their New York State Police there, and of course, it has a very large psychiatric hospital. Parks has materials there, Odyssey House and Health USA have homeless shelters. The Fire Department has a very small training program, and of course, Randall's Island has wonderful playing fields there. So I am saying, I hope that you will join me in saying that if we want big ideas, that I think having a task force to talk about where we could have affordable, permanent, Mitchell Llama light housing would be an example of something that the city council could be proud of initiating. I also want to thank wonderful interns, Jenna McCormick from Hunter College, Gregory Seawall from Marist College, Esther Amola from Hunter College, Tenay O'Drago from Dearford Academy, thanks to Prep for Prep, Alex Pulsford from Binghamton University, Leon Heims from the Lab School in SYEP, and Zachary Harwayne from Brooklyn Tech. Interns, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Ferris, followed by Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to start saying thank you to Speaker Adams for honoring Alexis Martinez today in your opening remarks. I'm deeply saddened that we have lost a dedicated NYPD officer and a neighbor of my district due to a violent domestic dispute. Alexis Rodriguez was only, Martinez was only 26 years old when he left us far too soon. My office and the Soundview community will continue to grieve this enormous loss. I send my sincerest condolences to his family, his friends, and his colleagues during this heartbreaking time. The first bill I'd like to bring to all of your attention is Reso 728, which calls on our partners in the state to create a linkage fee for large-scale residential or commercial projects and a trust that would receive this fee to fund job training, education, and employment programs to support the surrounding communities these projects take place in. Linkage fees are charged by the local government on real estate developments with the purpose of generating local funding to address the important workforce aspects of these projects, such as job training programs. This resolution advocates for all residential or commercial construction that exceeds 100,000 square feet in a community to be charged with a linkage fee to offset the impact projects of this size can have on a community. Secondly, I'm introducing Intro 1139, which will allow rideshare drivers to opt in to place ads in the interior of their cars and allow them to maintain a passive income alongside their work as a driver. This bill puts drivers first and gives them the opportunity to put more money in the back of their own pockets by making a percentage of revenue from the advertisements in their car. This is especially timely with more fees incoming to our drivers from the outer borough communities like mine because of congestion pricing. I hope you all join me in safeguarding our drivers from additional fees and allow them to bring in more revenue each month by signing on to Intro 1139. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember Vernikov.
Thank you. Today, I would like to introduce Introduction 1149. This bill will require the Department of Sanitation to provide adequate supply of water while street sweepers in operation unless the Commissioner of Environmental Protection has determined that there is a water shortage, supply, or emergency. And I believe it's very important because several times, street sweepers in New York City are cleaning the streets without water in their tanks, creating large dust clouds. I personally witnessed it several times. This poses a significant challenge for pedestrians, especially those with asthma and respiratory diseases, as the dust can exacerbate their health issues and make it difficult for them to navigate the streets safely. Also, I would like to express my deepest condolences to the family of 15-years-old Markell. This boy drowned last week on a section of Coney Island beach without lifeguards. We need to do much better as a city to recruit more lifeguards. So likely, we need to increase their salaries, and also, we need to do much bigger effort to have more free swimming courses everywhere and to recruit them. My heart goes out to the community, but we cannot have large sections of the beach, not just in Coney Island, but all over the city, without lifeguards. And finally, I would like to mention another tragedy. 15-years-old boy who immigrated from, his family immigrated from Samarkand, Uzbekistan, Faridun Novlonov was killed simply walking on a peaceful Benson Hill Street in the middle of the day. So again, we need to increase number of police officers. We need to fight for bigger, better public safety in New York City. And again, my condolences to the community, and I hope that perpetrator will be arrested very soon and will face justice. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilwoman Vernikov, and finally, Councilwoman Holden.
Thank you. This past weekend, O'Shea Sibley was at a Brooklyn gas station in my district with friends late Saturday night and was stabbed to death. Stabbed to death while filling up gas at a gas station. At a gas station and had the nerve to dance. O'Shea was stabbed, it seems, because someone didn't approve of his dancing, of his lifestyle, of his identity, because he was gay. This was his offense. This is pure hate. I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to the family and friends of the victim and to everyone affected by this tragedy. Whenever acts of violence took place in the Jewish community, I always stood up for its victims. Whenever acts of hate and violence took place in the Asian community, I always stood up for its victims. Today, I stand with the LGBTQ community to condemn this horrific act of hate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Holden.
Thank you, Majority Leader Powers. The two bills Queensborough President Donovan Richards and I introduced today protect our communities and preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods. Intro 1146 would require the owner of any vacant building that is not continuously guarded or not sealed and kept secure against unauthorized entry to seal building openings using a material other than plywood. Plywood on abandoned buildings creates an eyesore, contributing to neighborhood blight. By banning plywood, we can encourage better alternatives that maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Also, Intro 1147 requires owners of vacant residential properties facing foreclosure to provide a $5,000 bond to the Commissioner of Finance. This bond will serve as a safeguard, ensuring that necessary housing maintenance, building repairs, and sanitation violations are addressed promptly during periods of vacancy and foreclosure action. By holding owners accountable, we prevent neglected properties from becoming blights on our streets, maintaining the beauty and safety of our surroundings. I thank Borough President Donovan Richards for working with me on these bills and urge all my colleagues to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holden, seeing no one else signed up, I'm now going to call on Speaker Agent Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of August 3rd, 2023, is hereby adjourned. The stated meeting of August 3rd, 2023, is hereby adjourned.